Hamilton City Council now session. I'd like to welcome all the guests that are here tonight. Thank you for coming. As Paul Lee, this is a pleasure to be here.
Goodness gracious heavens, Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to assemble ourselves here so that this council and mayor can carry on the business of the city. We pray that everything that's said and done will be in accordance with your will in a peaceful manner. We pray your blessings on our town and we ask forgiveness of our sins and shortcomings. In this favor's ask for Jesus' precious and holy name.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Recommendation approved minutes from my last meeting? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Recommendation approved resolution two thousand eleven dash eight dash fifteen memorandum of understanding between the Tuscaloosa Veterans Affairs Medical Center in the city of Hamilton. I think Hamilton is fortunate to have the Veterans Administration to choose us for their location, a local veterans clinic. And back there, is it gonna be here two days a week or?
One day a week, I believe, that's what they say.
Okay, so they're gonna be here on Tuesday?
That's, to my understanding, that's where it's gonna be.
Okay. And all the veterans in our area, I think it covers Mayor and Lamar. I was unable to attend that meeting, but anyway, it's a great service for our veterans and it will be located at the recreation center.
They may be going to, uh, uh, there's gonna be each county seat.
Okay.
They were going to tag it.
Yeah, Phil, Vernon, Hamilton.
Okay, we'll have an update shortly on that. But I'd like for our veterans to get the message that it will be occurring and I think we have open house. I mean, oh, ribbon cutting and meetings confirming that what date, twenty fifth?
I'm not sure what they do. It'll probably be announced.
Okay, we'll announce it anyway, so we really appreciate the opportunity to work with our Veterans Affairs. And it will save our veterans a lot of travel time to Tuscaloosa. It will be able to cover most of their medical needs here in Hamilton. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Got a second.
All in favor? Uh, recommendation approved resolution two thousand eleven dash eight dash fifteen eight to move the municipal voting location from Hamilton City Hall to the E.T. Sims Junior Neighborhood Facilities Building. At the last voting we had here at the City Hall, it was crowded and we couldn't keep the proper control of what was going on at the voting plate tables. So we will have a whole lot more room at the reg center, the whole municipal election. Do I have any comments from any of the council?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you have to get Justice Department approval to move a voting place?
Yes, and Scott's handling.
Okay.
We have to first vote on it before we can apply for that check to the feds. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
That was second, Scott. All in favor?
This won't interfere with any other elections, like, you know, any congressional or anything like that.
I think our elections here are not on the same date.
I just wondered about that.
Yeah. Is that right, Scott? We interfere with county election, state election?
No, sir, it would not.
Okay. Recommendation to move Chris Aprils from grade three, eleven forty five to grade four plus trained at twelve fifty. His six months probation is up and he's doing an outstanding job for the city as a mechanic. Do I have a discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Got a second.
All in favor? Okay. Item five. Discuss a little something before we vote on it. When we took off for office, we pledged to the citizens of Hamilton and to God that we would uphold all the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. And we are, and I intend to do that. I owe no citizens of Ha- all the citizens of Hamilton the same. I would not and have not catered to special interest groups or individuals concerned in these ordinances. I think that people look back that we've, that we have began to enforce laws depending on the books. And in the past, people turned their backs on those ordinances. But when we take off our office to uphold all of them, that's exactly what we're gonna try to do. In nineteen forty-two, the city of Hamilton adopted building codes. And what we've done, they've been on the books, should have been being enforced since nineteen forty-two. And this current administration has modified this building code ordinance to comply with the two thousand six international building code. And we began enforcing this ordinance after we modified it as well as all other ordinances. The council are willing now to review the ordinances and make necessary changes for instant permits required for roofing. We have heard from several citizens who expressed this, their dislike concerning permits for roofing. And we have a recommendation on the agenda tonight concerning this. And we're going to review fee schedule and make changes deemed necessary for the rest of the code. And hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have that recommendation available. And at this time, I'd like to hear from any of the ordinances, people came, if you have any comments about the roofing or the building code itself.
If this is changed, when you, if you vote next time to change it, that we are not required to have it?
Yes, ma'am.
I already have purchased one, but I haven't used it yet. Will I be able to get a refund on that? Do you think?
I hope we will. That's something we didn't have time to, to, uh, confirm, but that's a recommendation. I'm gonna bake to the council and see if we can get that on the agenda next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'm from Paulardson. I, um, gonna have a roof put on my house one day this week. I have to get that building permit. I didn't know anything about a building permit.
Okay. After we, I made the recommendation with council concerning this, I'll have an answer for you, okay? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Well, if, I understand this, if, like, we got a storm comes through, it doesn't damage on the roof and I have to have repairs, I'm gonna have to get a building permit to have it done?
Uh, I will answer that after we, I present the recommendation to the council. I hope I'll have an answer for you then, okay?
Okay.
Anyone else?
I just have an opinion about that. I just don't think it's right that, uh, that people have to pay for having repairs made due to storms and things of that nature. And I just don't understand why that y'all have imposed that on us.
That was in the ordinance, but we've heard from you and we feel like we need to modify it a little bit. So my recommendation to the council, I hope we'll answer that, okay? I'll get back with all of you. Does anybody wanna discuss the recommendation that you had a chance to read on the building?
I'm gonna make the call, please.
Alright.
April is not here tonight. She had surgery last week and she was supposed to be here, but late this afternoon, probably after four o'clock, she had to go to the emergency room. And I had a, so she's not gonna be here and she would like to be here to vote on this. I had made a motion last meeting to abolish the two thousand and six international residential building code, leaving the commercial building code in place. And we took immediate consideration on that last meeting, which didn't pass, which we could vote on at this meeting. She'd like to be here to vote on that motion and I'm gonna say at the next meeting, I mean, I'm gonna bring that up for a vote when she's here.
Okay, the recommendation I have before the council is to suspend the roof for unanimous kind of ordinance number two thousand eleven dash fifteen to amend ordinance number two thousand ten dash thirteen building permits for the city of Hamilton. No fees for roofing replacement and allow you to pay fifty dollars for inspection of your roof if you so desire. Section one D under miscellaneous, remove the fees from all of that miscellaneous section except we want the heating and air conditioner must be installed to the code, so, uh, is that all discussion we have?
It says on here that the fee for installation of heating and cooling units is twenty-five dollars. Well, that twenty-five dollars is gonna go away.
Yeah.
All it, all it is, all it is changing is that you need to, you need to put that into code. It needs to be installed in code.
Okay. That we're leaving that section?
Yeah, we're gonna leave that.
All, uh, maybe we don't pay for it.
That's right.
Well, the way I read under miscellaneous one D, that's what we're, we're saying we're taking out, removing of the fees and twenty-five dollar fee on work involving installation of energy replacement windows, the addition of replacement of any type siding, shutters, gutters and so forth. So this is a small portion of, of the fee structure.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Got a second.
All in favor?
Nay.
Can we wait just a second and ask Scott a question? By voting on this now, it will change, it'll help those people, like he said, it's gonna have roofing done this week.
Right.
It will, it will help them now.
Right.
Next meeting, I bring, I can still bring my motion up from the previous meeting?
Correct.
So to give them some relief right now.
Right. If you wanted to remove those fees, that would not affect your motion, uh, being it would be brought up next week and it would remove the fees for roofing permits? And the other, other fees on the, here. Did we vote? Still thinking.
So this, this isn't, this would be a temporary relief from the roofing now?
Well, it would be a permanent relief until something goes.
Until the next vote on the building code comes up.
Right.
I'll vote yes. Thank you.
I'll change my vote to yes, so you can vote in vote tonight. All I'm doing is voting for unanimous and senior. Is that correct?
Motion, recommendation approved ordinance two eleven dash fifteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Well, I'd, I'd let it come up for a vote. I would abolish the whole thing.
Yeah, but you give it, we're giving these people, it's still gonna pass?
Well, if you do that, you turn right around.
Yes, I'll vote yes. Is that better?
And I'm, I'm gonna break it up, next meeting, to abolish the entire thing. That's your option.
That's your option.
So that answers your questions. You don't have to get a permit for roofing.
What if you've already gotten?
Well.
Okay, I, I'm fixing to make a motion and I'll make it right now. If anybody that has called paid for a roof, have it refunded.
If it has not been installed?
No, going all the way back to when that was started. If anybody's had a roof put on, they can get their money back.
Okay. Do I have any other comment, council?
Because that seems to me to be the only fair thing to do if you don't abolish the roofing. When the people that have one put on, they need to get their money back.
I agree with you.
Oh, you've got a good point there, I will say that. But if next meeting we come back and we have a vote that is majority votes to completely do away with it, are you gonna give all the fees back?
No, all we're talking about right now is the roof. On a new house, it's all in, uh, combined, but this is just a roofing. If they had storm damage or if they've replaced their roofing. And they came in here and paid a fee to get that done, let them come in here if they desire and get it back. Refund.
I need a second, Scott. Okay, do I have a second?
Did you get your, the answer you were looking for?
No.
Well, what if the next meeting we abolish the entire building code over the last two years, are we gonna refund all of those? Building a house? Whatever, someone's coming to get a permit?
No, that's entirely different.
Well.
All we're talking about right now.
One of the things, one of the things that's got us in the problem, the mess that we're in right now with this is that I had a call from a lady and she had a roof put on as a result of storm damage. And someone told us she was having her roof put, uh, roof put on, so we sent somebody out there and we tell her she's gotta get a permit. So she comes in and gets the permit and this was back in June and there's a last meeting night, no one has been out to inspect it and she paid her fee. I mean, in cases like that, where people are coming and bought a permit, done the work and we've not even had someone to go out and do the inspection, we should refund their money. The work is complete and they paid a fee for a service they didn't get. And that's my stand on that.
You're saying that the ones that had it inspected shouldn't get a refund, but the ones where it was not inspected? So we, another, let me see if I get this correct.
Yeah, the ones that paid their fee and did not get an inspection. We should refund that. We didn't do our end of the deal. They came in and bought their permit. They got their roof put on and we didn't inspect it. That we had this in place, it was the law, right? So if it's the law, then if you had a roof put on and you bought your, uh, you bought your permit and we inspected it, we, everybody's done what they're supposed to do. I think we're opening a big can of worms when we say we're gonna refund everybody that ever bought a permit on roofs.
I know.
Because when we, if we do abolish this thing, that means we're gonna have to refund everybody or what to me would be bad.
Was the installation complete when she purchased the permit?
Was?
But it, it's hardly worth it to inspect it. You can't, you can't go in there and redo the whole thing. That's the problem. We haven't had the people to get out and determine who's doing what and get their time to inspect it. Which we desperately need.
Why don't we've been charging people to buy a permit after the fact?
We found that out. So what we're saying is, is make this thing whole for people who's put a roof on. And that's what I'm recommending.
You recommend to refund the money to everybody that's put a roof on?
An existing building. Not a new one, but an existing building. Existing house.
Do we know how much money we're talking about?
It doesn't matter. They, they deserve a refund.
We paid an inspector to go out and inspect some of them at a pretty good rate of pay. I mean, this was our, this was a, our covenant and we, if we went out and inspected it, we fulfilled our end of the obligation. We passed it. I mean, I'm saying if, if we charged them and didn't do an inspection, yes, we should refund them.
I'll hold you for a minute. Come in, son.
If we're gonna do away with it, I'm gonna just give it back to the ones who inspected. Yep.
Well, for the ones I be that are here, um, I've gone back through all the books and this is definitely not a money-making thing. I can tell you. We pay an inspector and then we have somebody that's employed part-time that's helping now with some of this and we have a salary there, plus expenses. Plus it takes up a lot of time of other employees, so it's definitely not a money-making thing. And if it's not something that you want, and I asked last meeting, I, I didn't know what to do because I really felt like it was a loop thing. And I asked for people who had a comment on this, one way or the other, to call me and let me know how they feel about our building permits. I've had numerous people call and every time I go out to Walmart or to, uh, an event, people come up to me and say, I'm against it. You asked for, you asked us to tell you and I tell you I'm against it. I've not had one person say they were for it and I'm one.
The roofing?
I wasn't.
All of them. Well, how, how do you do that? When, back in nineteen forty-two, they passed the building code and I figure those people were pretty smart. They had to be the way they wrote it out. And then we had the southern building code and all we done was to modify it or make it, uh, modern. And now here we are, we want to do away with the whole thing or just a part of it? See what I'm talking about?
Oh, I, I think the problem that we've got with the people that I've talked to is the way we've handled it.
Well, that's probably true too. But what the people, I think, what they are looking at, we don't mind having a building code, we just don't want it enforced.
No, no, I think, I think it's the way we've handled, we've had.
Well, that could be.
Well, you could correct the way we've handled it and still keep it. There's nothing wrong with tweaking it. And if we do the revitalization downtown, we've got to have it. Or we can forget the revitalization. And I know there's a lot of people wanting the town revitalized.
It seems to me like building codes, building installations and things like that, maybe that should be for new construction or new additions onto your home or whatever. But maintenance shouldn't be included in it. That's the way it seems to me.
That's what, thank you. That's what we're really pulling out of the discussion now is whether to keep it and to apply it to new construction. Yes, sir.
Georgia, where I grew up, I worked, my daddy, he was a contractor. He always had to get a building, if you're gonna approve it, if I'm gonna go out there and say add on or prove something, yes, I can understand it, but something that I've just got, like my house, paint's flaking, I gotta have the paint up. I don't think I need to have a building.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're, that's just gonna, we'll do away with it.
I just, I mean, as far as, I don't think nobody complained about adding to it. You pay a fee for something, you don't do that, but I think that's our problem right here, but we're thinking about it. We have to do stuff that's already there.
Yeah.
Just maintenance.
We appreciate your comment, honestly. We, we appreciate, we wanna try to do what the people want to do. And, and keeping the, the code for reconstruction, where it's residential or commercial. And I think most people, I know when I built my house, I wished the town had had a building permit. To make sure that my foundation and all of that is installed correctly.
Right.
And, and if the plans call for studs on eighteen centers, the builder puts them on twenty-four, you know. I, I'm not a builder, so I really wouldn't catch that. But if the plans call for it, you want it there. And if it calls for two to fourteen floors, and they put twelve, you know, you see what I'm trying to say?
Right.
And, uh, what we're trying to do is just make sure that the citizens of Hamilton receive what they pay for.
But the building code is not for them that's gonna do it right in the first place. For them that's gonna do it wrong. That's the way that goes, in my opinion.
So let's just, do we wanna vote on the refund? Let's vote on it.
Can I refer back to our ordinance that we approved and tell you some of the things that are still in there when we take out this section, uh, one D, uh, under A? The permit fee shall be assessed at twenty-five dollars for the following. Residential alterations, improvement or remodeling that include winding and or electrical modifications for one each of the following bathroom, kitchen, laundry room shall be twenty-five dollars. The fees shall increase by twenty-five dollars for each additional bathroom, kitchen or laundry room included in the alterations, improvement or remodeling. Inspection fees are included in the permit fee. So that's saying remodeling, you're still gonna have a fee if we only take out what you all.
Sharon, what is your opinion about remodeling a kitchen or a bathroom or, what's your opinion on that?
That is something getting into, what you're talking about there, you need to improve it, okay? Scott sent a picture back, he lives next door to me, you saw I improved our home over there. Well, I packed, taxes went up. I wouldn't have minded getting something, somebody come over there. In fact, I wish I had a little time for a unit we had put in. I had, you know, had to have it redone. But anyway, what we're saying is, I'm just having something done on my house that's already there, like I'm gonna have to have a roof put on myself. Well, the roof's already there to begin with. We're just gonna have to fix it. And that's what this lady's done right here and that's what Paul's done right here and that's what we're talking, that's what we're getting at. Now, if I'm gonna go and add on to my house and up the value of the property and all kinds of stuff, yeah, I can see, you know, I can understand that.
Mark that inside of the house, like we're gonna have.
Yes, sir. Can I say something on that? Yes, sir. Please do.
To me, when you say, I'm gonna redo my bathroom, just tear it, the fixtures out, put new fixtures and the electrical's gonna be just like it is. Put a new toe, new, new shire and all that. If, if I get somebody to come and build that, the trouble of it, if you come down here and pay for an inspection, you won't get it till it's completed and how is he gonna come and look at that? Now, that's like a roof. I'd rather pay you a fee to inspect my roof and him stay at home. Because he can't see after that roof's nailed on.
That's true. That's true.
I'd rather, if I don't have to pay it, I'd rather he wouldn't come down here. Because he gonna be tar, raise them shingles up.
That's not good.
No, they won't stick back down if it unstuck. Now, that, that's the same way about rebuilding a small room or, or something like that in your house. If you're not gonna change the electrical parts, just say you're gonna put new walls and new finishes, fixtures in, I can't see the point of like you said, on the roof, I won't have to pay an inspect, I'd as soon as he stay down here, not even come down there, because when they was buying a good carpenter, how that box stand where he can't see nothing, no way.
We adopted those things based on the code. We can modify that.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be glad to modify it.
Yeah.
That's what we have in this meeting, because we want it, we want people building new houses, uh, new commercial buildings.
Yeah.
Really, that's what we were worried about at the time we were doing it. Of course, it was on the books now, since nineteen forty-two. What we did was just modify and start enforcing, which it should have been being enforced since nineteen forty-two. But we're willing to listen and, and I appreciate y'all's input and, uh, that's what we're trying to do is to make it more user-friendly for our citizens.
Well, I just put my comments in.
Well, we appreciate it.
I, I've been a carpenter for years. I know nothing about it, but I know when it's done right.
Okay, I really appreciate all that.
The point I'm making, uh, after this. The point I'm making, actress dumb, I don't see no common aspect.
Well, in a bathroom, like the plug-ins, if you're gonna redo the bathroom, you know there's a circuit breaker in some of them things in case you drop something into that water.
You're supposed to put them in.
You're supposed to put them in there.
Right.
That, that's probably what the code says. Well, I know it says that.
Well, I, I would put one in there, I mean, I don't know, it don't cost that much difference in getting their clothes in the correct.
That, I think, my lady's made a good point in that we don't have, we don't set up a situation where somebody could get kicked.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, but we can't do that unless we get to it beforehand.
Right.
So your point's well placed. Anyone else? Make your motion again, back there.
I make a motion that we, for those who have had their roofs replaced or been drawn out or torn damage, that we refund their money. Hold on.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor? Scott? In that case, being a tie, Scott, I can vote, right? I vote for it. Okay. Recommendation, approved resolution eight fifteen dash eleven B setting the speed limit at thirty-five miles per hour on Tenth Avenue Southwest between State Road four to three South. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the next one. Recommendation, approved resolution eight fifteen dash eleven C to establish a twenty-five mile an hour school zone on Tenth Avenue Southwest between Smokey Bear Road and a point hundred yards west of the Hamilton Elementary School. Uh, this should be active on school days from seven AM to eight AM and from two-thirty to three-thirty. And I'm glad the chief is here with us. Would you come in on that, chief, please?
Yes, sir. The, uh, current speed limit for Tenth Avenue Southwest is thirty-five. And when you get near the elementary school, there's been fifteen mile an hour speed limits on there. The, the zone is low enough that it's just outright ignored by everyone. It, it is kind of a low speed limit zone. So we've looked at it, uh, we've clocked cars going through there, they're generally running through there on non-school times at thirty-five, which seems safe. Uh, we've talked to the principal there, um, she has no disagreement with it, uh, as long as we have a school zone there that run about twenty-five. And we've been out there on school days as well and clocked cars, and they've generally been running twenty-five, and it seems to be working out safely. The fifteen mile an hour zone, and that one little stress is, is just, it, it doesn't seem to be sensible, and so people are just driving what they think seems sensible, and it's, uh, going unregulated for the most part. So we think this will regulate it and in a reasonable place.
Okay, you need to come in from the council. Okay. Uh, thirty-five, number seven, do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? And then on number eight, the twenty-five mile an hour school zone, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Recommendation, city purchase of hundred dollar signed football fence that started stable from the Aggie Boosters Club. Do I have a motion? We did that last year, by the way. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Uh, recommendation to review a certificate of project number one eighty-one schedule to review August eighteenth to eleventh. Currently held at the People's Trust Bank is a forty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six, thirty-seven CD. Uh, People's Trust, their quote was for one year was point nine oh. For two years, it's one percent, one point ten percent. Superior Bank, for one year, point thirty-five, two years, point sixty. First State Bank, one year, one percent, two years, one point ten percent. First National Bid, one year at one point six, two years at one point three six. Well, far ago, did not bid. First National Bank has the highest vote for one year and two year. My question is, do we wanna do a one year or a two year? Come in from the council.
I would, I would say, I would recommend that we go on one year, because we may need the money, you know, before two years.
Well, it's, uh, interest rates are volatile right now, so it, you probably would be better to do one year. I agree.
I think so. I'll make a motion that we go with the First National Bank for one year, I think.
Okay, second? All in favor? Recommendation to appoint Henry Bonner to the planning and zoning board for a term of four years. His term will expire August two thousand and fifteen. Do I have any comment?
He was a good man, I would make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Recommendation to reappoint Lloyd Ponce to the planning and zoning board for a term of one year, and his term will expire in August two twelve. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a big motion.
Second? Thank you, both. All in favor? Recommendation to move the next county, count, uh, council meeting, excuse me, to Tuesday, September the sixth, due to Labor Day holiday. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor? Thank you.
And that will be a five-third.
Yes. Uh, recommendation to accept twelve thousand Southern Automation Pursuit to Court Settlement, and I would like to have, uh, Scott to kind of elaborate on that, please.
Thank you. That's something we should go to executive session this case.
Okay.
I think the motion would be entered to the executive session.
I'll second it. All in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor? Recommendation to accept the twelve thousand from Southern Automation Pursuit to Court Settlement, I recommend that we table that to the next council meeting.
I'll make the motion that we do that.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, just, uh, everybody's got one? Wallace, accept, Wallace. Would you like to come in, sir? On any subject?
Second?
On any subject?
Yes, I would, and it's, uh, referring to an article, I believe, uh, written by Mr. Howell, Saturday's paper, uh, concerning the lambs being approved for business at the South Ridge site. Uh, the thing that concerns me, and I live across the highway from the South Ridge, not right on Highway seven, uh, two seventy-eight, but within view of. And on page three of the paper, under the subtitle, "Plan gives details on business", it says, "According to the proposal, the West Building will be used for offices and a retail auto sales business." And looking at the zoning map this morning, uh, in Jan's office, that is zoned for light industry, it is not zoned for retail. And an auto sale, in my opinion, would be classified retail. This says it'll be up to, uh, fifty cars, uh, a month to be sold there. And then down and near the bottom, uh, of the second column, a paragraph says, "The lambs also plan on entering the wrecker rotation for the Alabama State Troopers in Northwest Alabama. Wreckers will meet display along the road to advertise that building." Uh, and I have a lot of concerns about that.
Okay, I, information.
And I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but I did want to voice my concern.
That's good. Actually, before we adjourn, we hear from anybody in evidence that comes to the meeting. The information I have received is that the wrecker will not be parked out front or where they can be seen, like the article said. The cars will be new cars, ready for retail sale. And, uh, and what I can't think of, the other portion of that agreement they have with him, but they have assured me that they will police the activity out there, and it won't turn into, uh, something that would probably be unsightly. That, uh, they assured me they were going to do that. That's where I am right now on the information from that.
Will they be in front of the West Building as this indicates? The West Building is the original building that is not part of the industrial market.
That's my understanding now. If any of the council has.
Are you re-zoning that property?
You brought up a good point about that.
And I'm not against the city collecting sales tax and so forth from the sale of the vehicle. But, uh, if we start doing that in violation of the zoning code, then, uh, our zoning code is worthless.
I, I remember something, but not enough to talk about it about that, Chuck.
And, and I looked at the map this morning to make sure that I had my information correct. Now, that was in my clock this morning, that I looked at the map, so.
I think, I think, uh, I don't think anything's in front of the planning commission, but I think the proposed uses were consistent with the uses, uh, as on the zoning map. There's a list of those proposed uses under, under the zoning map and under, you know, residential business, light industry. I think they're proposing falls under the specified.
I've got the zoning here.
I haven't looked at that specifically, so.
It does fall within the category. Oh, I've got the zoning ordinance with me, but I, to pick it out here is pretty cumbersome, but, uh, I think it did file within the use, uh, if I remember correctly.
I, I think so.
Retail sales would fall under light industry?
According to our ordinance, I think I, I looked at it up.
We'll research that, Bobby, and, uh, get back with you, okay?
Well, I know several of us that live right in that area do have some concerns about that.
Did they decide not to put the vectors in now?
That's my understanding. We will let Scott, uh, research that and get back with you. That be okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that opportunity to speak.
Oh, yes, sir. Any, anybody can speak. Thank you. And I really, I know all the other people that were here is gone, but I really.
Scott, you don't have to.
I wouldn't. He would, but he's gone.
What do we need to do on that?
We need to make a decision, because we will lease the, that small, and Scott, you know about this? Small piece of land.
The batting, the batting dealing.
With the details as far as the lease and things to be worked out later, they just need to work if we're gonna allow them to do it. So maybe we can give them that money. Carry on, carry on. We're talking about you, I guess you heard the time. Yeah, you just, you know, we're gonna allow them to do it, so we, then we can work out the details of the lease and that sort of thing.
You wanna talk about the batting cage in North, batting cage?
Sure, yes, sir. Um, what we'd like to do, the, uh, Hamilton High School baseball and softball teams, we'd like to go in together and, uh, build a sixty by eighty, uh, metal building. Uh, pretty straightforward, it'll have a dirt floor, um, you know, uh, be wired for lights, that's about it. And, uh, all the, all the money will be coming from our parents, you know, we, we've got quite a bit of money raised, and the Booster Clubs from both organizations have talked about borrowing what we need to finish it out. What we need is, uh, permission to build the building, um, and allow us to use it, so, um, I've been talking with the mayor and, and then working through some different things, what we've come up with, um, the superintendent of education has said that the board would be willing to lease the building from the city if, uh, you, in other words, reverse of what we do on the track, which is now what happens at the Hamilton Track, if, uh, if we could do that and lease it back to the Board of Education. Once the building is built, lease the building to the board, and that way, um, the high schools would have use of it and, um, you know, be able to, to, uh, to use it for our purposes since our parents, of course, will be the ones who'll be funding and paying for the building.
Yes, is that no expense to the city?
Right, right.
Well, whose land will it be on? Will it be on city property?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Scott, will you comment on that reverse arrangement?
It would just be simply the, it would be on our property, but we'd lease it to the Board of Education for, for their use. Same thing as, uh, what happens with the track, is their property, but we lease it from them to use for city purposes. How much amount are we talking about? Just for the building, city? A little bit, probably a little bit more, just sixty foot, eighty foot, parent's.
Sixty by eighty.
Will that take care of your parking?
Um, shouldn't be an issue with parking. Um, we already walked to the, there's a batting cage out there that we walked to to use. Um, so, you know, we, we won't park out there, they'd just be, there's an access road if we ever needed to haul some equipment or something out there, but as far as parking, we wouldn't park out there, we'd just walk.
They were something brought up, Scott, that FAA.
Right.
Comment on that just for them?
That would be something out of our control and, and the building might have to be subject to the FAA regulations, uh, or else. Now, they're looking at having it tore down at the FAA if it ever came, came in. Um, I think that's something that Patrick is aware of as well, and we'd wanna make, probably put that in the lease period, too. It would be subject to those, but I believe, based on my talk with Mike Shaw this afternoon, that that would be in line with the regulations.
Okay.
You know, it's in, it is within the areas. I said, this is highly unlikely. First of all, it's not costing us anything, but highly unlikely if the Board of Education decided to go build another school somewhere else and build baseball field and whatever, they can't take this building with them, it'd be a problem then.
And we understand that. Um, and, and on that issue, by the way, I did, I also talked to Mike this afternoon. He, Mike Shaw, of course, the, you know, county engineer, he said he just didn't think there were any problems at all. Um, we're talking about fourteen foot sidewalls, so we're not, we're not that tall, we wouldn't even be up where the lights are.
You wouldn't be above the tree line. You wouldn't be above the tree line.
No, no, and he said, you know, we wouldn't be able to glide path or whatever. He didn't see a problem, but if there were, uh, you know, again, that could be addressed.
He's not somebody to take you, give it FAA, you gotta really.
Of course, that, Mike, Mike can probably have that tomorrow, 'cause, uh, we have those in the house. It's just a matter of looking at. It wouldn't affect us anywhere, that'd be, it would be their problem anyway, they're the ones spending the money. If y'all build it, they.
If we lease the property to them to rent the building, then the insurance and that type thing would be your, you would be responsible for that?
Well, in, in terms of the, the building itself, when I talked to the superintendent about that, you went on the building, and, and we understand that, so, uh, you know, let's say, and this, of course, is real important after April twenty-seventh, if a tornado were to come through and destroy that building, then, you know, it would be on your insurance as to whether or not, and you'd have to choose, I suppose, as to whether or not you wanted to file a claim and replace the building. But as, as far as insurance in terms of liability, our kids are already insured under the Board of Education when they play anywhere, so it doesn't matter. So in other words, in terms of liability with, with the players and that sort of thing, that would be.
So we'd have to carry the casualty, the, uh, building, on the building? Is that what you're saying?
If we decided to, yes.
Yeah, if you decided to. I mean, I mean, the building itself would still be on city property, so it would, as, as a structure. Yeah, if you decided to, I mean, I mean, the building itself would still be on city property, so it would, as, as a structure, it would not be covered by Board of Education. Uh, because you own the building, I mean, you, you, it'd be your property, does that make sense? And that's according to superintendent, um.
Are you needing a decision on that, like you have it tonight?
I'd like to, uh, and if you wanna, if you wanna do it as a, if you wanna say, you know, you approve it contingent on the FAA ruling or whatever, and, you know, if there's any other question you have, that'd be fine, but we, we'd like to go ahead and start our process of, of getting our money lined up and, and getting our, we, we'd like to have this thing up, hopefully, you know, within the next month and a half or two months, because what, what we're looking for is something we can use, you know, during inclement weather, those kind of things, where we can get somewhere and still get some work done.
Okay, I'd like to make a recommendation that we enter into, Scotty, what are you gonna call then? Uh, do you lease?
Just be a lease agreement.
I'm, I'm, I don't, I hate to interrupt, but you tell me if I'm right about this, Scott, you really don't have to lease it, I'm, I would be stepping out on faith a little bit with you. You really don't have to lease the building until after it's constructed anyway, there's not anything there to lease now.
Yeah, that's right, but when it's complete, we would lease it to the education, contingent upon FAA approving it.
How many years should we lease, twenty, thirty? What are we doing with the track?
I have no idea.
Hundred years, uh, no, it ain't a hundred.
Nine years, a five. Twenty-five, but that subject to me, you.
Sure.
Oh, Patrick says he's like a winner.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do they, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
No other?
I'll make a motion.
I got something. Oh, okay, what's that? But I don't know if we can do anything about it or not, because some people are having trouble with it. It's snowy, and it's been snowy for some time, and this feller talked to him, and he come back and told him that squirrels had gnawed the land, but you still hadn't fixed it. That should make it, should be fixed. Well, mine is snowy and the thing other people experiencing, I think we should get with the owner of the TV cable and express our concern. Maybe give a report by the next council meeting, if that works. Okay. Then, do I have a motion to, to make that move, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Thank you.